Call to order the January 12, 2015 Latrobe City Council Meeting. Please stand for the pleasure of the leaders.
The pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask for a moment of silence to give thanks, to ask for guidance, or to just quietly relax. Roll comments, Buck.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Here.
Mrs. Smith? Mrs. Caldwell-Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Sepora?
Here.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.[97.22][97.22](Laughter)
Mayor Wolfer?
Here. Wow, what an entrance.
Six crazy.
May I have approval of the minutes from the December 8, 2014 meeting?
I move that the minutes of the December 8, 2014 meetings be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk, where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have an approval for the fiscal department bills, approval of the fiscal department reports and pay bills for the month of December 2014?
Please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions or discussions?
Ms. Buck, I know we're at the end of the year, but any of these outside of the realm of the budget, and they were close to the end of the year, so just a quick confirmation.
Actually, the budget, the cash basis budget for 2014, where we came in at 99% of expenditures, so we became under budget, and our revenues was a 5% collection above the budget, so we've got a 6% spread, which is pretty good for 2014.
Yay!
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have the citizens' request portion of the meeting. This is to address items on the agenda only. Again, we will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting to have an open forum of discussion. So if you have any items that you'd like to discuss related to the agenda, I would ask that you step to the microphone, state your name and address, and please try and limit your comments to three to five minutes.
James Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue. I see one item under the police department agenda, the approval of a memorandum of agreement between a city and a police officer who is going to retire. I was just wondering, is that the reason why we put the ad in the paper for the police, for the additional policemen that we needed? A couple, I guess about a month ago, we put an ad in for a police department.
No, we had a policeman that quit, and that was for replacing that individual.
Okay, what was the purpose of the ad, then?
Replacing someone who resigned. We had a police officer that resigned.
Was all back.
Oh, okay, fine. So there were two officers that resigned, then?
No.
One's retiring, one's resigned, I'm sorry.
One retired, one resigned. Okay, fine. I understand that the officer's going to be working for the street department, is that correct?
The one, one officer did leave Latrobe Police Department, and he was hired for Public Works, yes.
Is, is that an additional position for Public Works?
No, that was a replacement.
Okay, fine, thank you. Have we thought about hiring a part-time police officer instead of a full-time?
Our contract does not permit that.
Oh, we, there's nothing in the contract?
Our collective bargaining agreement does not permit us to hire part-time, part-time police officers.
Oh. Thank you very much.
For the record, Jim, I, I understand the financial aspect of it, but personally, I, the whole part-time thing, I prefer that as long as we can continue to have full-time police officers, it's in everybody's best interest. But it is a negotiated item, so it would have to be negotiated into the next contract. Any other comments relative to the agenda from the citizens? Not, we'll move on to committee reports, finance committee, Mike?
Not at this time, except you heard Mr. Jones say that as for the 2014 budget year, we were real close to spending what we said we were going to spend, and we exceeded what we expected to take in slightly. So we had a year in the black this year.
Public safety. Julie, Jared, anything?
Yeah, we have a neighborhood watch meeting next Monday at 6:30. A fellow by name, John Matts from Rampart Security, will be there giving a talk on protecting and protecting your home and your property and keeping them safe, keeping safe. That's 6:30 next Monday. I know it's a holiday, but...
Are we here?
We'll be here. Spread the word, bring a frame.
Personnel committee. Tricia, Mike, anything?
Nothing coming up, except we did meet and interview several applicants for the public works position, and also look forward to being able to participate in anyone who has been coming along with the police department hires.
Public Works? Jared?
Nothing at this time.
Community development, anything, you guys? Board authority reports, I don't think we have any. I think your packet's in there from, well, as you all know from Park and Rec, January 2015 marks the resignation or whatever, the pulling out from Unity Township for the Latrobe Parks and Rec. The name's been changed to Latrobe and GLSD, which is Greater Latrobe School District, Parks and Rec program. The two remaining parts of the commission stay intact, so the commission remains intact minus the three representatives from Unity Township. We are currently working through a budget for, to account for that. We will go back to a structure that we had prior to the merger, where Latrobe residents will pay one amount for programs, Unity Township will pay a higher amount, and then anyone outside the Greater Latrobe School District will pay even a higher amount. So it's, you know, Back to the Future, so to speak. We had this process before, and so we're working through that now, and, and more information on that will come forward. Department reports, Joe?
Last year about this time, we implemented a program in the city here. It started off with a lot doubting it, a lot of unknowns, we were just getting our feet wet. In the springtime, we had everything in place, everything moving right along, tweaking certain things, and by summertime, we were into recycling, single-stream recycling, curbside, using a toter, and it became a success. By sometime in the fall, it just became old habit or just a thing to do in the household. The last couple months, in talking with Karen, there were very few complaints. We have a few missed here and there. We have new people coming in that are asking questions, you know, that are just moving into Latrobe. And a little test that I performed this past year, if a family of two diligently recycled the entire year, they could have shaved $24 off of their refuge bill by saving on the stickers. So it is a success, it's just another thing to show you of how Latrobe can pioneer and move on in and advance if we all work together. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Chief Boomer?
Nothing other than the process of hiring that we're going through right now. We had the School Agility Test Saturday, we have twelve candidates. Also, there's an interview scheduled tomorrow, 1:30, from an individual from the last list.
Okay. Thank you. Chief was only gone here, is he? Okay. Ann, anything?
I have my report this morning.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kelly, you're up.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item on the agenda appears under the Administration Finance Department. It is our annual ordinance fixing the taxing rate for city purposes, and it's captioned ordinance number 2015-1, fixing the tax rate for general city purposes and other purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2015, and ending December 31, 2015. Section 1, that a tax being the same as hereby levied on all real property within the city subject to taxation for city purposes for the fiscal year 2015, beginning January 1, 2015, and ending December 31, 2015, as follows. A, for general city purposes, a tax rate in the sum of 21.30 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation at 100% market value of assessed valuation. B, at his memorial library, a tax rate in the sum of .20 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation of 100% market value of assessed valuation, levied in accordance with the vote of the electorate of Latrobe Borough at a special election of November 1953. C, other purposes for general government protection of persons and property, health and sanitation, highways, special services, and other miscellaneous services. Section 2, that the total tax rate hereby levied for all of the city purposes as set forth in section 1 be in the same as hereby fixed at 21.50 mils. Section 3, that any ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith or in conflict with this ordinance or any parts thereof be in the same, is hereby repealed. Section 4, that within ordinance shall take effect on the date of publication of the post-enactment notice of passage of the same enacted and ordained this date, then proper motion would be to enact the ordinances outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. Mr. Kelly, the mileage rate has changed or not changed from last year?
The mileage rate has remained the same as the previous year.
Thank you.
So in other words, no tax increase for 2015. Yay! And a little bit of money left over from 2014, so it's been a good year. Let's hope for the same in 2015. Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2015-1. Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mr. Sepora?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfer?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
The, the next ordinance, Madam Mayor, members of council, again, is required by our charter, and it's ordinance number 2015-2, establishing wages, hours, and fringe benefits and positions of the city of Latrobe for the fiscal year 2015. Now therefore be enacted and ordained. Section 1, that for the position of city manager and director of tax revenue, the salary is set forth on exhibit A attached here too, and the hours and fringe benefits is set forth on exhibit B, a copy of which is on file in the office of the city secretary, be in the same or hereby established for fiscal year 2015. Section 2, that for the position of director of police department and chief of police, the salary is set forth on exhibit A, and the hours and fringe benefits set forth on exhibit C, a copy of which is on file, the office of the city secretary, be in the same as hereby established for fiscal year 2015. Section 3, that for the position of director, director of administration finance, the salary is set forth on exhibit A, the hours and fringe benefits set forth on exhibit D, a copy of which is on file, at the office of the city secretary, be in the same or hereby established for fiscal year 2014. Section 4, that the salaries and fringe benefits for all other non-collective bargaining unit personnel be entered hereby established for the fiscal year 2015 as those salaries and fringe benefits set forth on exhibit A attached here too. Section 5, that the wages and or fringe benefits for all non-uniform collective bargaining unit personnel for fiscal year 2015 be entered hereby established by the collective bargaining agreement between ASME, AFL-CIO, Council 83 Local 629, and the city, approved the 14th day of December 2009 for a term from January 1, 2011 through December 31, 2014, and as may be extended by agreement between the city and the collective bargaining unit until a new collective bargaining agreement is executed, the wages and other fringe benefits shall then be determined and established under the new collective bargaining agreement prospectively. Collective bargaining agreement establishing such wages and fringe benefits for the non-uniform collective bargaining unit personnel is incorporated herein by reference, and a copy of that agreement is on file at the office of the city secretary. Section 6, the wages and or fringe benefits for all uniform collective bargaining unit personnel for fiscal year 2015 be in the same or hereby established by the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Latrobe and Latrobe Police Department effective January 1, 2013 through December 31, 2015. Collective bargaining agreement establishing such wages and fringe benefits for a uniform collective bargaining unit personnel is incorporated herein by reference, a copy of the collective bargaining agreement and the tentative collective bargaining agreement to be approved by city council for the period effective January 1, 2013 through December 20, 2015 are on file at the office of the city secretary. That by this ordinance, the city of Latrobe is hereby approved, reapproved, and ratified, the wages, hours, and fringe benefits as currently set forth in the collective bargaining agreements as amended or modified by the award of our, any award of arbitrage readers herein, referred to in sections 5 or 6. That any and all other ordinances or resolutions inconsistent herewith be in the same or hereby appealed. Section 9, that the within ordinance shall take effect on the date of publication of post-enactment notice of passage of the same enacted and ordained this date, and the motion would be to enact the ordinances outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to enact the ordinances outlined by the solicitor?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion?
Ms. Buck? This is ordinance 2015-2. Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Sepora?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Brayden?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfer?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda, again, under Administration Finance, is a resolution, and it is entitled, Adoption of the Westmoreland County 2015 Hazard Mitigation Plan as the official plan for the city of Latrobe. Now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that the Westmoreland County 2015 Hazard Mitigation Plan is hereby adopted as the official hazard mitigation plan of the city of Latrobe. Section 2, that the respective officials and agencies identified in the implementation strategy of the Westmoreland County 2015 Hazard Mitigation Plan are hereby directed to implement and the recommended activities assigned to them. That Wayne B. Jones is hereby designated as the primary point of contact for the city of Latrobe, that Carl Bowlinger be in is hereby designated as the alternate secondary point of contact for the city of Latrobe, and that Ann Powell is hereby designated as the floodplain administrator for the city of Latrobe. Section 4, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other appropriate city officer be entered hereby authorized and directed to sign an authorization and letter of intent to participate in the update project, to sign any and all documents required, and to take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the within resolution resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion?
Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2015-1. Mrs. Caldwell-Brayden?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Sepora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfer?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item under the Administration Finance Department is a resolution. It is entitled, Adopting Informational Sign Policy, Whereas the City Is Erected an Informational Displace Sign on City Property at the Administration Building, and Whereas the City Desires to Share the Usage of the Sign with Various Local Public and Charitable Entities as Well as Local for Profit Entities, and Whereas the City Desires to Establish a Policy Governing the Usage of the Sign by Entities Other Than the City. Now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that the council, city of Latrobe hereby approves and adopts an information sign policy attached here too in substantial form as exhibit A, said policy may be amended by council from time to time. Section 2, usage of the sign by entities other than the city shall be subject to a fee schedule to be established by ordinance. And section 3, that the mayor, city manager, and or city secretary, and any other proper city officer be entered hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council this date. Attached to the resolution is the informational policy, and the proper motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? I have a question. How soon do we have a fee structure ordinance?
Next month.
Next month?
I have a motion, and then coming up next, authorizing me to prepare.
Oh, yeah, there it is, okay.
And the ordinance actually has been prepared and will be given to council prior to the agenda, or at the beginning of the ordinance.
Okay. Any other questions?
Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2015-2. Mr. Sepora?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfer?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is a motion, and as I just indicated, it reads, I'm moved we authorize the solicitor to prepare an advertising ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to include a fee schedule for the informational sign usage.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda appears under the police department. It is our annual, I call it catch-up ordinance, whereby we make permanent by ordinance various changes to the vehicle code that we accomplished by, on a temporary basis, by resolution.
Do we have to read all of this?
I'm not going to.
Okay, good.
The ordinance reads, Amending Chapter 256 Vehicles and Traffic, Sections 256-17, Establishing and a Removal of Handicap Parking Spaces, Loading and Unloading, Permanent Parking, and Fines for Illegal Parking. And the changes which we have accomplished by resolution are listed in the ordinance, and they are now being made permanent by the ordinance. The motion would be to enact the ordinances outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to enact the ordinances outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion?
Again, Mr. Kelly, do you want to enact the changes we made last year through?
Through resolution. We've already authorized these changes on a temporary basis throughout the year until we get to this point, then we make them permanent.
Thank you.
Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2015-3. Mr. Sepora?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfer?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item also appears under the police department. It is a motion, and it reads, I'm moved we approve a memorandum of agreement between the city of Latrobe and the collective bargaining unit of the Latrobe Police Department regarding the retirement of a police sergeant.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to add the two extra days vacation.
It's something he would have aired in about four weeks anyway, so it was just a way of speeding up, unless you just figure out the retirement, just facilitate the retirement.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's it.
For the agenda items, that's correct.
Next, we're going to move on to unfinished business, appointments of boards and authorities. At this time, I'd like to appoint Don Albert to the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Albert has been serving on the Civil Service Commission for some time now and has expressed his interest to be reappointed, so that's my nomination.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the resolution would read, now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that Donald Albert be in is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Civil Service Commission. Am I correct on the board, civil service?
Service.
Okay. For a six-year term, said term to expire January 31, 2021. The motion would be to adopt the resolution.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2015-3. Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Sepora?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfer?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Appreciate your service.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's Harry. Wrong Albert.
Sorry there. Well, I appreciate it anyways, Don, wherever you are. I'm sorry, what? Yeah, I know, I know.
Public Works?
Yeah. I'd like to nominate Ralph Jenko for the zoning hearing boards. Mr. Jenko, here?
Yes, I am. Can you spell his name, please?
J-E-N-K-O.
Thank you.
Would you minds to say a few words, tell the council a little bit about your interest in this position?
Okay, everyone, I'm, I've been an employee at Kennametal for about 42 years, and recently, when 2009, probably moved into the community itself. And I'll be retiring soon, and I just want to participate in the community.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the resolution would read, now therefore be resolved. Section 1, that Ralph Jenko be in is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Zoning Hearing Board for a five-year term, said term to expire January 31, 2020. Motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2015-4. Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Brayden?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Sepora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfer?
Yes.
Those six, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jenko. I'd like to, is Mr. Weiss here? No. Okay, we have an application for, for a member of the planning commission. We have one, one position?
No, that's, that's, it's, it's one or nine.
Oh, he's resigning. I guess I read that wrong. So we have an opening on the planning commission, correct?
Right, and there were no applicants.
Okay, so anybody out there interested? We still have an opening on the planning commission. We still have an opening on the Planning Commission. That brings up the Latrobe Municipal Authority. And as I've expressed in the past, I feel it's my duty and responsibility to nominate the best candidate, so I'm nominating Neil Fenton.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the resolution would read, appointing member to the Latrobe Municipal Authority now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that Neil Fenton be and is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Municipal Authority for a five-year term, said term to expire January 31, 2020. Motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2015-5. Mr. Baldmire.
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angela.
No.
Mrs. Caldwell-Greitner.
No.
Ms. Beazey.
Yes.
Mr. Sepora.
No.
Mayor Walper.
Yes.
The...
Three yes, three no.
The motion would therefore fail.
I, my next candidate that I would recommend is Mr. Don Claier. He is a civil engineer and also a resident of the city of Latrobe.
Spell his last name, please.
The resolution would read, appointing member again to the Latrobe Municipal Authority now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that Donald Claier be and is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Municipal Authority for a five-year term, said term to expire January 31, 2020. Motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2015-5. Mrs. Caldwell-Greitner.
No.
Mr. Jimon Angela.
No.
Mr. Baldmire.
Yes.
Mr. Sepora.
No.
Ms. Beazey.
Yes.
Mayor Walper.
Yes.
Those are three yes and three no.
You guys asked me for a city resident, I gave you a city resident. What do you want? I'm not going any further. We've got two engineers that are more than qualified. I felt that I met you halfway with the fact that you were adamant that the person be a resident of the city of Latrobe. So, position will stay vacant.
Do we need the resolution for, now, the, did I finish off the question right yet, or is that just a commission or...
It's up to the third.
I'm trying to...
Madam Mayor, the question was asked in terms of the mayor or someone being appointed for councils and liaison. I cannot, I have to be honest, I can't recall if we did that by resolution or if that was simply a position the mayor has appointed. What I'd like to do is double-check it from the last time, so that I can tell council accurately whether we need a motion or not.
Do you remember Mayor Griffin that just nominated for that? Because I don't know if that's...
Do you remember, because you...
She asked, I stepped back, and she...
She appointed me, and then we voted on me?
Was there a vote, or was it just...
We voted, yeah. She appointed her.
Why? Can I appoint me again? I guess I can.
That's what I'm wondering.
Unless there's someone else that wants to do it. Doesn't seem like there's a lot of volunteers to do these kinds of things.
Okay.
Or, or I just stay there until someone else replaces me.
I don't know that it is an annual position, Madam Mayor. I think it's, you serve at the pleasure of the body that appointed you, which is council.
Till they tell me?
I have listed as a three-year term.
We'll have, let's, let's look at it and decide next to me.
Barbara indicated she thought it might be a three-year term. I'll double-check that, so we'll know if the February meeting...
Okay, I'm looking my agenda. No, it's here, Flora. We still have a vacancy on the Industrial Development Authority, the Planning Commission, and we're still searching for a zoning hearing board alternate. So if anyone is interested, please let Ms. Buck or Mr. Jones know. Let's see, new business. The only thing I wanted to mention under new business, most of these for the finance committee, we are going to have, I think, an unbudgeted item, expense item. We've had some issues over in Sixth Ward with regards to the property, as to who it belongs to, whether it belongs to the city or the Castle Co. Packers. So we are going to have that surveyed. And that's going to, Gibson Thomas is doing that for us, and that's going to be a cost of $500. We've had this ongoing discussion for many years, since La Nature's was there, as to who owned what. We need to get a definitive resolution on that, so that will be, I believe, an unbudgeted expense, correct?
Yes, yes, it will be unbudgeted.
Will we have professional services?
Well, I guess it could fall under... Yeah.
I, we'll talk a little more later when I hit the mark for it. I think we've got some very good positives to talk about.
At this time, we'll have the citizens' request portion of the open forum. Anything that's on your mind you want to talk about, please?
I have one thing under...
Sure. I'm sorry. Anybody else have any new business ideas?
Since it's 2015, it's new this year, but I'd like Joe or Wayne, if you could give us an update on the Murphy's Bridge completion date, if we have one?
My last conversation with them was the end of December, and they, the completion date by contract is in the end of June, but they, they believe they're going to have it open in May, sometime in May.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any new business items they'd like to discuss?
Yeah, hey, Joe, are we planning a, another electronics pickup?
Yes, in the spring.
After Christmas, after Christmas, everybody got something new and don't have anywhere to put the old stuff, so...
Are you speaking from experience, Mr. Baldmire? Any items from the citizens? Anything you guys want to talk about?
Jay Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue. On the Neighborhood Watch, is it possible to have something put up on the sign about the meeting for the 19? And also, do we have to pay for something like that if we're not a city of, city?
If you'd like to pay, we accept payments, but you don't have to. We, we're, our training is going to be next Friday. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, this Friday. So once we get the training, we'll be able to do some more things like that for you.
Well, I'm not worried about the training. You're going to be...
No, the training is, the training is so we know how to put the stuff up on the sign.
We don't know how to do that yet.
Well, okay, after, after you know how to put it up, will the Neighborhood Watch have to pay, since you will be voting on that probably at the next meeting?
Now, you're covered under the group that's exempt.
Okay, fine. Also, on the Neighborhood Watch, I've got some, we're going to have a mailing, oh, not a mailing, actually, we're going to hopefully have enough people to distribute different pamphlets. And I've contacted Joe Pertratta's office, and I've already received four different pamphlets to be, to be handed out, 3,000 of each. And they're stacked up in my house. And I'm also going to be contacting our Congress, US Congressman, and set up a meeting in, in Murrayville, and try to get some additional items. We're going to be putting them in a, some type of a plastic thing that we can put them on the doorknobs. There's a cost involved in that, in purchasing those plastic things that we're going to put in the pamphlets in. And I was wondering if council would consider footing the bill for that. And it's probably going to cost probably $200. And if they know anybody that would be willing to donate that, you know, some organization or some law firm or some company, and maybe even put something, have something on the form of an advertisement on the envelope itself, I don't think we would have a problem. Also, we'll have a, in the, in the handouts, it's all about Neighborhood Watch in that there, and a letter that they can sign up for Neighborhood Watch. So if anybody knows somebody that would be willing to do something like that, I certainly would appreciate it. The second item I have is, I'm just wondering how the school resource officer is doing, the new officer. Maybe Jim could...
Chief Bumor, you want to address that?
No, he's very busy.
Besides that?
A lot of things that we didn't figure on getting involved in, we get involved in. That seems to be the trend of police work. But he's very busy, he handles a lot of incidents, and it's going fine.
Did they set up a program that, that, you know, to more or less instruction students or, you know, different seminars and things like that for, for the students or the strictly a type of a position these, going to arrest somebody if it's a, if they get out of hand?
It's not so much that he's up there to arrest people. I mean, he does a lot of counseling. He also does a lot of parental contacts when there are students involved in incidents. He kind of sorts through the parental aspect of it, contacts the parents, it's done with the parents, it's done with the, with the students on a type of counseling, you know. Of course, he's not, not per se a counselor, but he advises them and counsels them on if their behavior would continue the way it's going, they're involved with the law to be more specific and more competent, so he's in that, not so much the arresting. There have been several arrests made, but I'm not able to really discuss it because it's juvenile, but he has made some arrests, and it's, it's going, it's busy, it's very busy.
Is there a proportion of his time between the school district and the city?
No, he's, he's predominantly at the school when they have break, like over Christmas. We had an, we have an officer who's off on a surgical medical leave, and he filled in for two weeks on his shift. We've saved a ton of overtime. In the summer, he will be working in regular rotation. I assume that he'll be on 3 to 11, it being the busy shift. But while school is in session, he works, works the school on the weekends. Of course, he's off, there's overtime himself for that.
The last item I have is, you know, I think we're finding out that there's less people volunteering for, to be on these different boards and that there. And I had brought it up previously about a person that's on a specific board being able to be on another board. For instance, if you're on the zoning hearing board like I am, is it possible to be on the Latrobe Municipal Authority or the, or the Planning Commission? And I know Mr...
I don't think there's any restrictions against that, are there?
Well, Mr. Kelly, you have reservations.
Well, there are, there are some. And quite honestly, I mean, if, if council directs me, I can look it up and determine where there are conflicts. One that does come to mind in one sense is planning and zoning. Because the Planning Commission tends to review some things that come before the zoning hearing board and give their opinion. If you have the same person on both boards, I can see a possible conflict of interest there.
Yes.
But between zoning and IDA, there may not be any. It's, some of them are very specific by statute, others you just have to really determine if there could be a potential conflict of interest.
The last thing I have is, we had a 3-3 vote on the, on the Latrobe Municipal Authority. I'm just wondering what the objections were to either one of the proposed people on the different board. I'm just wondering if you would like to explain yourself, why you voted no or yes. Thank you.
That's a fair question.
I didn't have any information other than an email on Mr. Claier, and I've already stated my concerns for someone to be a city resident, so I need to do some investigating and research on Mr. Claier. I know full well about the others, and there are several other candidates that are well-suited to this board as well.
There are no other engineers, and I, I got a meeting, I have a meeting scheduled later this week. We are still trying to work through the 537 plan. I think it's so hard to get, as you said, people to, to volunteer for these boards, and I think the fact that we have two potential engineers, I, I can't figure it out, because my understanding when I pointed Mr. Fenton was, got to be somebody from Latrobe. So now we have somebody from Latrobe, and he's still got voted down, so I'm not sure who you guys promised this position to, but, because it sure seems like that, it sure seems like that's what's going on here. But...
That's out of line, but, that's out of line to say, no one's promised a position, I haven't promised anyone a position, but I could say that the Water Authority has an engineering program that they pay good money for, and I think you might create conflict there that would cost more money if someone else on the, with an engineering degree may come in and decide to change things around. That's my thinking.
Completely different, completely different positions that these people hold. I mean, if you're an engineer and you're, and you're doing, and you're on a board, you're not acting as the city's engineer, but you can certainly vet out whether or not, you know, things are being done the way you think they should be, and, and put your input in. And as a board member, you only have one vote. But, you know, I don't know.
It is a business, so if you're a businessman or salesman, sometimes that might be just as beneficial to vetting things out on board, in my opinion. So when you ask Mr. Miller, my concern is those are wrong.
Thank you.
City managers' report.
Yeah, a number of items. First of all, with the bar itself and with Richard from the Catan Ferretti, we've been able to identify some insurance savings. We'll save $10,000 in, from the 2014 timeframe, and going forward, we're going to save another $6,000 in. Basically, updating the insurance list to be more accurate and to reflect where the city's at. Another item, I've got a number of items I want to grant, number of, next thing is that I think you need to be aware that Jim Bumor is giving up his weekends to help fill in on the minimum manning type of thing, and I think he should be commended for the fact that he's willing to put his time out and help reduce some of the overtime.
Thank you, Jim.
For his police career.
We really appreciate that. It just goes to show you how dedicated the chief is to the city.
Very good.
Next, I think that, want to mention that Joe's done a nice job on the roads. I came through, I sent you an email, I came through a number of communities, and our roads were the best in the city than anywhere else between here and West Newton, so they're definitely, Joe and his crew has been doing a good job. Next, on this, just want you to know that we're looking at locking in some lower gas and electric rates. We have consultants coming in, I want to see about reducing the rates for the city. 2014, I know some questions about the budget. 2014, between the reduction in gasoline prices, the lower insurance costs, the, hopefully the parking revenue should be increasing, and the fact that we're going to have two police officers that are at the lower salary rates, 2014, 2015 looks like to be a really good year budget-wise. Now, barring any, you know, major catastrophes, Malcolm and Wood, it should, it looks like it's going to be a very good year budget-wise. That's it.
That's good. That's a good way to end it. The only comment I have out of the mayor's report is, I have a meeting, I think it's Thursday, yeah, it's here, Thursday at 3:00, with the other entities involved in trying to finalize the 537 plan. So hopefully... So hopefully, we can put that to bed. I don't know what's, I don't, right now, it's just a lot of money being spent on engineering firms and attorneys. But we're still, we're still trying to resolve, there's a consent order agreement that's out there from DEP and so hopefully, Mr. Kelly and I'll be there, right, Jim, you'll be there? You're not coming?
Is this a meeting called by Dr. Boomer?
Yeah.
I think it purely from consent.
None of the solicitors are invited?
Eight years, huh?
That would be a no billing meeting. I don't have anything else, so at this time, if I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.